Adam, Eve, inasmuch as you have eaten of the forbidden fruit, if you will covenant and from this time forth you will obey the law of the Lord, we will give unto you the law of obedience and sacrifice, and we will provide a Savior for you whereby you may come back into our presence and with us partake of eternal life and exaltation.
Elohim, I now covenant with thee that from this time forth I will obey thy law and keep thy commandments.
Elohim, I now covenant with thee that from this time forth I will obey thy law and keep thy commandments.
It is good. Jehovah, inasmuch as Adam and Eve have discovered their nakedness, make coats of skins as a covering for them.
It shall be done, Elohim.
Brethren and sisters, the garment which has been placed upon you is to cover your nakedness and represents the coat of skins spoken of. The officiator will represent Elohim at the altar. A couple will now come to the altar. Brethren and sisters, this couple represents all of you as if at the altar. You must consider yourselves as if you were respectively Adam and Eve. We will put each of you under covenant to obey the law of the Lord. Brethren and sisters, each of you bring your right arm to the square. You and each of you solemnly covenant and promise before God, angels, and these witnesses at this altar that you will obey the law of the Lord and keep his commandments. Each of you bow your head and say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Brethren and sisters, we will now put you under covenant to obey and keep the law of sacrifice. And as Jesus Christ has laid down his life for the redemption of mankind, so we should covenant to sacrifice all that we possess, even our own lives if necessary, in sustaining and defending the Kingdom of God. Each of you bring your right arm to the square. You and each of you solemnly covenant and promise before God, angels, and these witnesses at this altar that you will observe and keep the law of sacrifice as contained in the Holy Scriptures as it has been explained to you. Each of you bow your head and say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We are required to give unto you the law of the gospel, which is the higher law taught by Jesus Christ as contained in the Holy Scriptures, to give unto you also a charge to avoid all like-mindedness, loud laughter, evil speaking of the Lord's anointed, the taking of the name of God in vain, and every other unholy and impure practice, and to cause you to receive these by covenant. Each of you bring your right arm to the square. Each of you covenant and promise before God, angels, and these witnesses that you will observe and keep the law of the gospel and this charge as it has been explained to you. Each of you bow your head and say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We are instructed to give unto you the law of chastity, which is that the women of God's kingdom and the men of God's kingdom shall have no sexual relations except with those to whom they are legally and lawfully wedded according to his law. Each of you bring your right arm to the square. You and each of you individually covenant and promise before God, angels, and these witnesses that you will observe and keep the law of chastity as it has been explained to you. Each of you bow your head and say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We are instructed to give unto you the law of consecration as contained in the book of Doctrine and Covenants in connection with the law of the gospel and the law of sacrifice which you have already received. It is that you do consecrate yourselves, your time, talents, and everything with which the Lord has blessed you or with which he may bless you to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for the building up of the Kingdom of God on the earth and for the establishment of Zion. Each of you bring your right arm to the square. You and each of you covenant and promise before God, angels, and these witnesses at this altar that you do accept the law of consecration as contained in the Doctrine and Covenants in that you do consecrate yourselves, your time, talents, and everything with which the Lord has blessed you or with which he may bless you to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for the building up of the Kingdom of God on the earth and for the establishment of Zion. Each of you bow your head and say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Brethren and sisters, this is the veil of the temple. I will now explain the marks on the veil. These four marks are the marks of the holy priesthood and corresponding marks are found in your individual garment. On the right is the mark of the square. It is placed in the garment over the right breast suggesting to the mind exactness and honor in keeping the covenants entered into this day. On the left is the mark of the compass. It is placed in the garment over the left breast suggesting to the mind an undeviating course leading to eternal life. A constant reminder that desires, appetites, and passions are to be kept within the bounds the Lord has set and that all truth may be circumscribed into one great whole. This is the navel mark. It is placed in the garment over the navel suggesting to the mind the need of constant nourishment to body and spirit. This is the knee mark. It is placed in the right leg of the garment so as to be over the kneecap suggesting that every knee shall bow and every tongue confess that Jesus is the Christ. These other three marks are for convenience in working at the veil.
Persons who have been endowed in a temple are responsible to wear a temple garment, an article of clothing not visible because it is worn beneath outer clothing. It reminds endowed members of the sacred covenants they have made and the blessings they have been promised in the holy temple. To achieve those holy purposes we are instructed to wear temple garments continuously with the only exceptions being those obviously necessary. Because covenants do not take a day off, to remove one's garments can be understood as a disclaimer of the covenant responsibilities and blessings to which they relate. In contrast, persons who wear their garments faithfully and keep their temple covenants continually affirm their role as disciples of the Lord Jesus Christ. Persons give up some individual freedoms to gain the advantages of living in organized communities. Such relinquishments of individual freedoms are principally based on commitments or covenants expressed or implied, being bound to Christ in their endowments.
Travis is wearing good soul. Let's find out if the Mormon employee is doing a double shift today. So, first thing we need to again remind everybody because most of you are new. Thomas B. Marsh left the church because of the Danite threat to America. He was told by the Danites that Joseph Smith was in charge of it. And so he left before finding out that Joseph Smith had nothing to do with it but was framed, blamed, and locked up in jail, liberty jail, for it. This was 1838. Thomas B. Marsh was told by the Danites that it was their intention to overthrow the United States and then the world. The intention is to use the Bible with its astronomical dating to coordinate their attack. This is confirmed with both Albert Pike, a Scottish rights mason, and an Illuminati as well as the Joseph Fielding Smith Sr. in The Way to Perfection. Three confirmations, separate and distinct from each other. In pages 290 to 291, there will be a transfer of government authority to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. The world cannot know of it. Mormons cannot know of it. It would ruin their whole plans if everybody knew about it. People might get angry and try to stop them. So, Church News time. For Friday, and it's only three. They are likely to sneak something else in, but this is kind of important, needs to be discussed yet again. So we're gonna see if the Mormon employee is going to attack me. So far so good. Suarez is the new thing. Elder Suarez speaks at Special Legislative Session in Brazil. So are you able to make the connection? This church wants to overthrow the governments of the world. And Suarez is speaking to the government in Brazil. Nobody seems to want to care. Everybody's okay with losing their rights. Everybody's okay with having their families dying around them. Not complaining as to why did this happen? Why didn't anybody warn us in advance? That we could have stopped this from happening? Bleep you all. So there's a a special session that was proposed by State Representative Victor Bonfim. I have no idea if I pronounced it correctly. I don't care. I deciphered paleo Hebrew. It's a visionary language. And this was specifically intended to be a special session for Elder Ulysses Suarez of the Quorum of the Twelve Apostles of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. No, he's on the board of directors of the corporation of the president using the old dissolved members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints as the cash cows. So that's kind of important to know. Everybody lies and spreads the lies. And it's been 200 years and nobody wants to know the truth. And so everybody wants to have it come as a thief in the night. And so they spoke about the importance of building a house of the Lord in the state so that, quote, "people have hope in the future and in eternity," end quote. Do I need to go back to The Way to Perfection yet again? Do you know about my land grab video? It's the three-hour video. Can't miss it. Representative Bonfim said, "The temple, quote, 'has already become a postcard of Salvador.'" Thank you for gifting us with this temple and also for caring for the hearts and souls of those in need. Anybody know about a quid pro quo? Do us a favor though? Elder Suarez would then say, "Gatherings such as this to celebrate of a house of the Lord are, quote, 'inspiring and divine,'" close quote. Captain obvious. Quote, "Humanity has been suffering from wars and afflictions of all kinds." And who's the cause of all those wars? Do I need to go back and read over The Way to Perfection? And in this sense, the construction of temples, idolatry alert. Hear no evil, see no evil, speak no evil if you don't want this heard. Provides healing? That sounds like medical misinformation. And strength? For our spiritual freedom? Really? Spiritual freedom? Christian spiritual? Which means not real? That spiritual? Continuing on, "Our faith teaches us to produce the Spirit into reality of the flesh." Alma chapter 32, starting in verse 28. And anywhere else in all of Scripture that talks about agronomy. "To overcome inner weaknesses and injustices." Inner injustices? Inner injustices. Creating his own doctrine as he goes. "Enabling us to become a transformer, transformative force in society." See what he's doing here? And in this way, the Church of Jesus Christ unites efforts, builds bridges, and then burns them down with the latest change in the handbook earlier this week with other entities. Entities, not individuals. A thing with distinct and independent existence. Could be. Because it's also a thing. And then existence and being. So yeah, we can get away with that. You know, he is Brazilian and so translation needs to be taken into that context. We'll let him get away with it. "To offer relief and improve the conditions of God's children." Really? How's Africa done with all the millions you've supposedly given to corporations to help Africans? Oh, they're worse now than when the church first came to offer hope, huh? Is it because they were fence sitters in the pre-mortal council in heaven that therefore the money is just going to waste? This is just so second wrong. So again, if you're thinking, "No, the church does charity." Do I need to read The Way to Perfection again? Do not forget The Way to Perfection. Co! Everything is designed around this one mission: to co! Bunch of dumbasses. And so the temple is not Joseph Smith's temple. Brigham Young changed it. Needs to be set in order. Back to the way Joseph had it. In Joseph's temple, Mormons became perfect when they were washed and anointed and took upon themselves the name of Christ. Brigham Young diminished all of that. Mormons no longer are Christ with his name. You are no longer perfect. Women no longer given Melchizedek authority and office. It stays within the temple. You have priesthood authority to be a temple ordinance worker. That's it. That's all. And so then he added an endowment ceremony turning the creation and garden stories into literal histories rather than prophecies about the Jewish Christ of which you just were washed and anointed to become. And then you're also given underwear. And so then there are covenant paths that you must be loyal and obedient to or you get the death penalty. First one is the law of obedience. Women still have to obey their husbands. They deceived you. You fell for it. Good job. Because the family proclamation. It all goes back to the family proclamation. Church didn't do it away with it. I just covered it in Church News video just the other day. You obey the Lord. Nelson speaks for the Lord. Nelson tells you to obey the family proclamation. Family proclamation tells you to continue to obey your husband. Men have to obey the church leaders. Very simple, not complicated. Then we have the law of sacrifice. As I've been doing a little clip for you, the law of sacrifice. And as Jesus Christ has laid down his life for the redemption of mankind, that's supposedly the atonement. Unfortunately, it's now literal history, so that isn't correct. That's Christian, not Jewish. So we should covenant to sacrifice... Wait a minute, we have to atone for Jesus's atonement? Yep, and we also have to pay. Tithing. The symbol of our worthiness to go to the temple and covenant and promise to the five covenant paths of obedience and loyalty. To sacrifice all that you possess. It's not yours. It's the church's. I mean Jesus. Because, yeah, Jesus. You can see him, can't you? Even our own lives. Oh! I know of some former religions that told their followers they needed to kill themselves to be saved. Jim Jones, wasn't he down in Brazil? Wasn't he down in Brazil? Jim Jones got his own Wikipedia page for that stunt he pulled. Mass murder-suicide in the remote jungle commune at Jonestown, Guyana. Not Brazil. Not Brazil. Where is Guyana? Do not... Very close. Is it right next to? Yep, it is. Yeah, Brazil goes all the way up to the top and then there's some several countries all right there in a row at the top. And Guyana is right in the middle, straight north of the main extension of Brazil. And then, uh, Koresh, David Koresh. Big shootout with the FBI. And Manson. If you count Helter Skelter. And the, uh, hell bop guy, Heaven's Gate. So, yep. This is what the church is talking about to people. This is what he means by the temple. Church owns the land in Ga... in, well, in Brazil. Guyana. I'm sure we have something in Guyana too. Statistics and church facts. Total membership. So 6,834 membership. 12 congregations. No wards, but they're all branches. And then four family search centers for recruitment purposes for the missionaries. So no temples. They're not faithful enough. Which under Nelson is strange. Why not Guyana? Do you not want Guyana? And sustaining and defending. Why does the Church of Jesus Christ... Why does the Church of Jesus Christ...? Oh, it's not the church. It's the kingdom of God. Do I need to repeat the Way to Perfection? This is what they're talking about when this church says kingdom. The coup! You need to sustain the church in their coup. You need to defend the church with their coup. There is a temple in Brazil. Special session of the government of Brazil to talk about how the temple is for the Mormon coup. And we're not done. We've only done two of them. There's three more left. Let's head and we gotta go to next one. Telestral world. Side by side. Law of the gospel. You think faith, love, that kind of thing? Nope! It's nothing to do with that. This is the gospel. "We are required to give unto you the law of the gospel as contained in the Holy Scriptures." To give unto you also... What's the law of the gospel then? The Jewish gospel? "A charge to avoid all light-mindedness, loud laughter, evil speaking of the Lord's anointed." Who does that consist of? Only the leaders of the church, right? Wrong. You just went through the anointings and the washing and anointings both. It's you too. You're not supposed to speak evil of me. Taking of the name of God in vain. What is the name of God? Is it God? So many people throughout my life get instantly offended when people say, "Oh, God, don't you take the Lord's name in vain." That's not his name. It's a title. And every other unholy and impure practice. You're gonna kinda need to be specific. You can't just throw it out generally. Cause then we can just pick and choose whatever we consider unholy and impure. And it's always somebody else, never us. And to cause you. A person or thing that gives rise to an action, phenomenon, or condition to receive these by covenant. And then the loyal deeds, and then the penalty. And off into the terrestrial world. Side by side. And so, law of... Wait a minute. The law of chastity. Is it chastity? "The state or practice of refraining from extramarital or especially from all sexual intercourse." They used to have, I believe it was intercourse, wasn't it? Before 1991? Communication or dealings between individuals or groups. I'm having group intercourse, mommy. And so, inter has to do with between. And course comes from the Latin originating as run, run between. Can't we just say penetration? Nope. The beat around the bush. Awesome song. And so, yes, there's only one way to have sex. Only one. Any other way is masturbation or sexual arousal. Seed, egg, baby. That is sex. And so those with seed, male. Those with egg, female. Seed determines the male or female of the baby. And so if you're feeling otherwise, you are already protected in the Fourteenth Amendment, section one. Except you're not anymore because SCOTUS overturned it. Remember the coup? And so it's weird. Because when I was a kid, it was fantasies or wet dreams. And then, as I grew up and went off to Canada, I'm hearing later that something new occurred with them. They're now called fetishes. They're no longer called fantasies. Music back in my day had fantasy. Flesh for fantasy. And now it's a fetish. And now, those words are obsolete as it's now been replaced with identity. Anyway, this has to do with marriage. Under Brigham Young, he put in polygamy. It's love polygamy. And so it's not sexual intercourse. It's marriage. And Nelson changed it in 2019 to return to polygamy. How many of you are being obedient to the living prophet of Jesus? How did you know it was changed? Are you kidding me? My ex knew it and told me about it. And if she can catch it, you should have. And then the law of consecration. Pay very close attention to the wording. It is in connection with the law of the gospel. Really? You didn't explain the law of the gospel. You explained some other stuff about our behavioral control. And the law of sacrifice. All that we know. Which, alright, it is that you do consecrate. Let's make sure we get the right definition. To make or declare. And it has sacred in it, secret. And a different con. And thus make sacred. Uh, let's see. They're not telling us the version of con, expressing an intensive force. Con... No. Yeah, with. And so, the other is without. Which is interesting, which comes from the Greek, doesn't it? Other languages are fun. In opposition or against. There it is. Finally, dear God. Yeah, the... It's actually cum, as in cumlata. With. Whereas the other one is in opposition or against. So in the first creative Christianity, con substantial, it's not with substance. It's in opposition or against substance, thus without. They're not saying the other one. It must be the different Latin. And so, yeah, the one is cum, and the other is con. Con is also part of cum. So that's why they're doing it that way. But in this particular case, with sacredness rather than against and opposition to sacredness. Yourself, your time, talents. And that's pretty clear. You're a slave. You. And every single day, minute, second of the day. Your time. You. And your talents. And so you're supposed to get an education for what the church wants you to do. You're not supposed to go on and decipher paleo Hebrew. And everything. All your possessions. Remember sacrifice? You are a slave. And you have to give everything to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. For the building up of the kingdom, the coup. And for the establishment of Zion, the coup. This is not complicated. That's what they're doing. Suarez has couped Brazil. Through the temple. And we will put the little clips at the beginning of the video with a pretty little picture.